Before calling roll, let me begin by noting that is obviously as a consequence of the COVID-19 outbreak. This planning board meeting, I think for the first time, is being conducted both live and via teleconferencing. In doing so, the planning board, the planning department had sought to balance the development needs of the city, the public meeting rights of our residents, and the safety responsibilities to our people. It is for that reason that many of the participants this evening will be using the teleconferencing platform. It not only protects them, but for those who happen to be in the physical audience there, it allows for greater social distancing. Pursuant to Executive Order 2029, signed by the Florida Governor Ron DeSantis, board members are allowed to participate in this meeting virtually via the Zoom video conferencing. Mayor Keith James signed Executive Order 202005, which waived bylaws for city committees requiring a quorum to be present in person. Therefore, the meeting is being performed in accordance with both executive orders. Before we get started, Mr. McCarthy, is anything you want to tell us as we go forward this evening or what procedure will be following?
Procedure is pretty straightforward. I would just suggest that when people aren't speaking, to go ahead and mute their microphones. That can be easily totaled with your spacebar.
Very good.
Steve, I'm sorry. This is Rick. The other issue I would suggest is that when you're taking a vote, you might have to do a roll call.
Fair enough. All right, let us proceed with the meeting. And Ms. Pope, will you please call the roll?
Ethan Mans.
Present.
Todd McLeod.
Present.
Peter Piffco.
Present.
Deborah Ray.
Present.
Andres Paradello. Let the record reflect that Andres Paradello is not present. Mark Pateman.
Present.
Christopher Chase.
Present.
Scott Holtz.
Present.
Next order of business is approval of the March 17, 2020 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any corrections or amendments? And if not, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So move down, Mr. Chairman, approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Be opposed, it passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is report of the planning staff. And who's going to have the honors? I see Angela is still connecting. We know that Rick's undercover.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest it looks like Angela might be having difficulty, but she, I thought she's in City Hall, but we can always come back to this item. Simply she was going to update any cases that may have been heard since the last meeting.
All right, fair enough. That moves us then of remarks of the chairperson, of which I have none. And then the next item on our agenda is declaration, a declaration of ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to report or to disclose?
I have one.
Please.
I received a letter from a family by the name of Cowell regarding Planning Board Case 1851. However, my decision will be based on the evidence presented at this meeting.
Ms. White, was that the letter that you distributed to all of us earlier today?
Yes, in Dana Cowell, yes.
Okay, yes, then I think we all received that letter courtesy of Ms. White. And that's going to be read into the record at the appropriate time. We all received that letter. Is any board member who has not received the letter to which Deborah refers? Okay. Now we move into public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of speakers. So when anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony on this meeting, please raise your right hand. Let me see it in the window, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to be given in this proceeding will be truthful? You have to unmute yourselves.
I do.
All right, thank you.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay, next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. And that brings us to Planning Board Case 1853. I don't know who's going to have the honor. Is it going to be Mr. Long or Mr. Seymour? Who proceeds? It's pointing to you, Joshua.
Yes. Anyway, I would like to introduce myself, Josh Long, for the record. Certified land use planner with the Gunsborough Law Firm. Also via Zoom is Brian Seymour, the attorney for the application. Would you like for me to go ahead and start with my presentation now?
Please.
Okay. This, let me, let me see if this works.
It's working fine.
We're all learning how to go a little bit.
I lost you.
All right, hold on.
Let me see if I can bring it back up again. All right, I'm back.
Can everybody see my presentation?
Yeah, for some reason, my computer crashes every time you do that.
Oh, no.
Can you see the presentation, Peter, or, and not us, or is it completely done?
I, okay, now I see both. I'm good.
Okay. It's, it's a bad connection in the prisons, is the problem.
Yes, I know. It's a lot of concrete and steel.
Okay, so everybody can see the presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So first, I want to thank everybody for this very interesting meeting tonight, doing something new for the first time, very exciting. I want to thank the city for putting this together. But what we have in front of you tonight is a major PD amendment to the Servico commercial plan development. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay. So here's a location map. Everybody is probably familiar with this location, the Palm Beach International Airport. South, the new Drive Shack building was just completed last year, is directly south of it. This is a professional office and a parcel that was approved in 1980. Construction was completed in 1983. It's on the corner of Belvedere and Australian. It is surrounded by existing commercial and industrial uses. You have two gas stations on the corners. You also have several large commercial office buildings surrounding the site and some industrial use. So quick, the project is 7.87 acres in size. It is completely built out. The last PD amendment to this application occurred about 27 years ago in 1993. So the hotel itself is 189,103 square feet. The office has two towers, an east and a west tower. They combined, so 110,795 square feet. And they do have a parking garage that they share. It's located behind the hotel and the office, so it's not visible from Belvedere. This is an aerial that shows the location of the office and the hotel and the parking garage. They do have the surface parking along Belvedere and Australian. There's a tennis court on top of the parking garage that the hotel utilizes as well. So the existing Servico sign program, one is approved in 1993. Real quickly, the signed regulations 27 years ago were different than they are now. Our, with our application, we're going to be bringing in this commercial plan development more in line with the current planning and development regulations for signage for general commercial properties. The underlying zoning for this commercial plan development is general commercial, so that's what the zoning would default to. So real quickly, there's language in the development order from 1993, a revision that allows for two facade signs, which combined cannot equal 300, 300 square feet. There is an existing sign on the, on one of the towers on the west tower. The Romano Law Group has assigned this about 255 square feet right now. And so our client Retro Fitness, they are locating their corporate headquarters to West Palm Beach, and they're occupying the top four for the east tower. And in line with the Romano Law Group, who has the, the top tier signage on the west tower, they wanted to put their signage on the top tier of the east tower because they wanted that significant prominence, that this is their corporate headquarters. They have clients and other people who are looking to invest in new retro fitness, fitness locations that fly into West Palm Beach. And they, Retro Fitness liked the fact that as clients were flying into West Palm Beach, they could see their logo on their corporate headquarters. So we looked into this and the, the existing regulations had to be changed because of the existing Romano law sign. There wasn't enough signage allowed for a retro fitness sign. And so when we looked into this, we realized with the help of the City West Palm Beach Housing Department, that the total square footage allowed under today's code was over 1,200 square feet along Belvedere. And combined with the hotel and the office, they were only about 760 square feet that they were utilizing. So it was significantly lower than what the code allowed. So we proposed what you see on your screen here, which would allow each of the buildings to have a top tier marquee sign of 300 square feet. Once again, our client's proposed signage is very in line with what the Romano groups would be, about 260 square feet. As you see on the screen there, that would allow our client to have the top tier signage. Want to say that while we were going through this process involving the property owner, the property owner approached us and understood the importance and significance of client and corporate identification on the building and the fact that the, the signage was so below what was allowed by the, the underlying zoning. They asked us if we do an addendum to our application, which would allow for other tenants in the building who had large corporate rentals to, to have signage for their businesses on the lower tier. So you'd have the top tier signage, which would be the marquee signage. And then you would have signage that would be allowed on the lower tier. And I've got some pictures showing you the locations of these. But this lower tier signage would be much smaller in scale. So what we have proposed with an addendum to our application would allow for four smaller signs. None of them allowed to be greater than 50 square feet. So you're talking about a very small sign located on the, the first tier. And when I say tier, when I, when I show you the next aerial, you'll see what I mean by tier. There are the white bands that go in between the windows as you go up and down the building. But we, so we added some language in our addendum, which clearly defined that the, the larger signs are on the top tier. And these new smaller signs that we're, we're proposing for the addendum would only be allowed on the smaller, the lower, the lower tier, the first tier for when you come into the building. So this is what we're requesting. Our staff has seen this addendum. They had no objection because once again, even with our addendum, we are still underneath what the zoning code signage allows by right for general commercial underlying zoning. So at the bottom of the screen, you can see a summary of what our application is proposing, which is identifying the top and the lower tier. We're increase the top tier signage by about 240 square feet over what is there from the 1993 amendment. We add the, the lower tier signage, which would be limited to four signs, no greater than 50 square feet. That still brings our proposed signage for the entire office building and actually for the entire CPD along Belvedere to be 1,200 square feet, which is still 78.2 square feet under what the general commercial zoning would allow. So I think this will do a better job of what I tried to verbally describe. So as you can see, this is the west tower. I took these pictures last week. So these were taken of the west tower, as you can see with the Romano Law Group. That's about 255 square feet in size. The east tower, which is the top tier, that's in the, the dark gray color, that is where our client's sign would be created. That would be the upper tier signage. The addendum would allow for smaller signs to be located at the, the entrance for the office buildings. And if you've been to this office building before, actually what I've done here is I've taken, the picture on the left is of the entrance of the west tower, and the picture on the right is the entrance to the east tower. As you can see, there's a covered porcupine in, in the middle that they share. So the, the signage would be only allowed on that first tier. So as you would be walking, after you've already parked your car and you're walking into the office building, you'd see that lower tier signage, which would not be able to be greater than 50 square feet per sign. So here is an elevation that our client had, had created from their sign company. This is about 260 square feet as the city regulates sign codes and measurements. As you can see, this is the location that they would have that. So this would identify that this is their corporate headquarters, that this is where their business is located on the top tier of this east tower. So with that, we do conclude our presentation. We do request that the planning board, support staff's recommendation of approval base, that it does meet all of the City West Palm Beach standards for amendments for plan development. And with that, I think I will stop sharing my screen unless somebody wants to see a certain slide. Or how, how would you want?
I'll tell you what, why don't you take us out of screen share for now, and if we need to bring them back, we can.
Mr. Mans, if I can clarify the request, because we did add something. It's a request to approve the application in staff's recommendation with the addition of the two signs that Josh mentioned. With the additional signage that, that was added this evening.
Okay.
The lower tier ones.
Yes.
Why don't we begin? I'm going to start on the upper left-hand corner. It's like the Brady. Whatever it was. Deborah, have you any questions?
Hollywood Square.
I know.
I just want, I just want to clarify that the additional signage is only for the lower tier as you're walking into the.
Yes. That is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chris, have you any questions?
I do not.
Peter? Scott?
No questions, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, Josh, does the code allow these to be backlit, or does the CPD allow these to be lit up in any way, other than frontlit?
So the design of the signs would default to what's allowed under the city code.
Right.
We've only added special regulations on the sign. So anything that would go and get a building permit would have to comply with the, the design regulations.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, any questions?
No questions.
Josh, you always give excellent presentations. I will say one argument I did not think was your strongest. And that is so that your, so that these signs could be seen from airplanes as they came in. I think that does seem a little much.
Okay.
All right. Have we anyone from the public who wish to be heard on this particular application? And if not, we're bringing it back to the board. Let me first ask, does anyone have an objection to this requested relief? Okay.
Mr. Brown, I didn't know Angela wanted to make a small comment.
I'm so sorry. I didn't know she was with us. We should, we should have offered staff, forgive me, I did skip that part. Would staff like to come forward and speak? Angela, are you with us?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, I'm having technical, technical difficulties, but I am on.
You gotta pay the phone bill there. I told you that.
I'm going to get out the chambers because my computer is having issues, so I can't stay in the chambers because there'd be an echo. And I want you guys to hear my echo. Staff is in complete agreement with the applicant. I have a whole presentation, but I'm not going to go through it right now because I can't even see it right now because I'm in another room. So you won't get the echo. But staff is in complete agreement because the signage that they're doing, basically, is under what will be allowed by right. If we were to get a rig, get rid of the actual sign package for the plan development, it actually would allow more signage on the building. So, and we are in a complete, complete agreement with the addendum. That for the little small signage for the corner. And the request meets all the requirements of the zoning and land development code and the cop plan. And I can answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions of staff on this? If anyone does, please speak up. And if not, we're bringing it back to the board. And at this point, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I will move to approve planning board case number 1853.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Request clarification, Mr. Mans?
Please.
That, that includes the additional signage as proposed?
Yes.
Yes, that's my understanding. Is that, was that the intent of the motion, Deborah?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the second understood that as well. That was our understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mans?
Yes.
Could we have a roll call vote?
We can, unless it's unanimous. Then we still need one. Okay, let me, let me just see. We'll do a roll call vote unless, unless there's any objection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone object? In which case, Ms. White, you conclude everyone voted yes, but thank you for that. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I guess you'll be leaving us now, right?
You're, you're fascinating people, but my wife is making dinner.
All right, we're holding up our plate.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
That then brings us to Planning Board Case 1851. And who will be making the presentation on behalf of the applicant? Ms. Asham, I have you down. Is that right? You're, you're.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. This is, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, okay. This is Donna Asham.
Excuse me, if I could just ask for one thing. For everyone, if you could please put mute if you're not speaking because it's, we got a lot of background noise.
Okay, can I?
Please continue.
Okay, okay. This is for a dock in the back of a property at 3010 North Flagler Drive. They currently have, we had approval because the city allows you to go 100 feet from the face of the seawall out the dock. Based on the depth and the shallowness of this, of this property, we're requesting to have the dock extend to 156 feet so they can moor their boat properly. At the 100-foot, oh, here's a picture. Great, thank you, Lena. At the 100-foot marking, it just doesn't allow us to put a boat. And pretty much all the neighbors go out at least 150 feet. So we're just asking if we can do that so they can moor their boats.
Forgive me, I keep having my mute on. I don't know why you're not responding. Anything more you want to add? If not, any questions of the applicant?
No.
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So, um. What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, but what exactly, why the need for the extra 56 feet than is allowed by the policy?
Mr. Chair, this is, I'm sorry. The applicant doesn't have a formal presentation. If you like, staff could do a presentation and then maybe open up the questions to make it a little bit more clear as to what the request is.
All right, is that agreeable, Scott? We'll hear, we'll hear from the staff and then we'll have the questions. All right.
Thank you.
Who will be handling this on behalf of staff?
Hi, this is Elena Wooten. I will.
Ms. Wooten, please, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Jason, can you?
So alone in that room.
I know.
Safe social distancing, yeah.
Practicing social distancing, yes. Good evening. For the record, my name is Elena Wooten. Planner, representing the plan, I mean, representing planning staff, in this case, 1851. It's a case for a special use class A permit with a waiver for the dock length to construct a dock accessory to an existing single-family residence at 3010 North Flagler Drive. As you can see, the subject property is residential, is zoned, single-family, low-density residential SF7 with the single-family future land use. The surrounding uses are also single-family. Next slide, please. The sub, sorry, the applicant, Tamara Rabil, represented today by Donna, you heard from her earlier. They're requesting a Class A special use exception for the dock and the dock length. As Donna stated before, the applicant is requesting this because they have a large 70-foot yacht and they need more. They need more depth to be able to moor the large boat. So they're asking for this extension of 56 feet. They've also submitted all of the approvals from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Army Corps of Engineers. Next slide, please. This is a survey of the subject property. I don't know if you can see it, but on my screen, everybody else's monitor, their video is covering where the dock is on the survey. But it allocates where it's supposed to be located and the 56 additional, additional feet. Next slide, please. In addition. Okay, this is a, a plan of the dock, of the proposed dock, showing the extended, what it would look like. Next slide, please. So staff finds that this application complies with the general use, specific use, and residential district standards. It complies with the additional standards for docks, except as it pertains to the length, which is why we're here, a part of it, because they're requesting a waiver to do the additional 56 feet. This application and this request also complies with the waiver standards. Next slide, please. Staff recommends approval of this case 1851 with the following listed conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Donna will be able to answer any questions as well.
All right, let me start with Scott. You had the question that we stopped and heard staff presentation for. Why don't we continue where we left off with you? You were asking a question as to the necessity for the additional length.
Yes, thank you very much, Steve. So, Chairman. So, right, so I guess, you know, we did, we did receive, as we disclosed earlier, some concern from neighbors. And I guess this, is there any indication from the applicant, this yacht that she is seeking this dock extension for, that is her personal vessel used for her own personal use? Or do we not know?
Yeah, no, it is definitely for her own personal use.
And with this 156-foot dock, would that be, would that, would that be the only vessel that she, that would be able to, to, to tie up on that dock at one time, or would there be the potential for multiple vessels to be tied to that dock at one time, even with the 70-foot yacht?
No, that would be the only vessel, yacht vessel. She will also be requesting a boat slip for two jet skis, a double jet ski lift on the other side of the dock.
And then another question I had was, and this may be more well-directed at staff, I don't know. Who, where else, where's the nearest dock that extends that far out into the water relative to this property? Is there one anywhere near there?
Ms. Wooten, can you answer that question?
Yes, yes. Um, if you, I'm sorry, Jason, can you go back to my PowerPoint slide? There's the table that was in the staff report that lists all of the docks and approximate length on Flagler Drive? If you could go back to that.
I, I see that, but none of those, I mean, there's one that's 140 feet. But I mean, I was just wondering if there was any other ones outside of that immediate area that, that go out that far. And is there any concern about a dock going out that far that would have, that it would have any impact on water traffic at all?
Well, they did get approval from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. So they received approval for the additional extension.
Oh, they received approval. I'm sorry, in the, in the materials, it said that they had, that their applications had been submitted. But I didn't know, I didn't see where it said that they had been approved.
Yeah, they, they have. And I'm sorry, the first part of your question, what was that again? I'm sorry. You asked the first part.
I guess it was just like, was there any other ones besides these ones that were listed? Is there anywhere else near there that even a little outside this zone on North Flagler, where there are docks that go out 156 or roughly 156 feet out into the water?
I think the 141 is the longest one that was listed.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
All right, let me start. And then Todd, have you any questions? Okay, Mark? No, let's see. Peter? Peter, you had to unmute.
I just wanted, I wanted to get a clarification. I mean, the applicant is asking for 156.
I just wanted, I wanted to get a clarification. I mean, the applicant is asking for 156 feet, but in addition, there's a 16-foot boat lift. So is the variance now 172?
That's, that's correct if you count the boat lift on the end of the dock. This is Donna, by the way. Um, but, you know, we did get approval from DEP Army Corps, and we're probably about 500 feet, um, with that extension from the channel, if you, I think someone had a question on if it will impact any traffic. Um, the channel is really far out, um, the boat channel from, from this location. So we're about 500 feet from the channel, even at the 156 feet.
Okay, so are we, are we not approving 172 then?
I, I, I don't know, but usually it's just the dock, not the boat, not the boat lift. We're looking for the dock because that's what the code calls for, 100, the dock.
Okay, okay, fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Chris, have you any questions?
Has, has the applicant established that, uh, that they need the dock to be that length in order to get that boat there? Is there extra room, or is that literally every, every foot they need for that boat?
It's pretty much every foot. Um, what we did is a depth analysis on the property. And, um, at 75 feet, we're only a three foot of water. Um, at the first 50 feet at low tide is dry land, pretty much. It's, it's shallow. You can, it's like maybe two inches to dry land. Um, and then about 75 feet out from the dock, um, the way it sits now, it's about three feet. Um, it starts getting deeper, probably about 125 feet, 130 feet. Um, and in order to moor their large yacht, they would need the, definitely to go up to the 156.
Thank you. Deborah, have you any questions?
No, I don't.
Ms. Wooten, I do have one question. Um, I've been sitting through a lot of these hearings where we deal with the dock length. And it seems we have kind of a common pattern where, where, um, we allow for a longer dock and it kind of sets a record for how long we have allowed it. And then that becomes kind of the floor for the next one, the next one, the next one. Um, I probably have been involved in hearings over the years where it was at the time, the longest dock then allowed, and longest dock then allowed. Is there some end when the city will say, no, it can't go beyond a certain number?
Um, I would like to answer that, but I think that Angela would probably be a better person to answer that question.
She's dodging us, you know, she's... Angela, you there? I didn't, I didn't know if you heard. I know there's a lot of echo, I know there's a lot of echo we have to worry about, but, um...
Let me go into the other room. Hold on a second, let me go into the other room.
Okay, I was joking. Yeah, you understand my question, Angela?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you can, fine, okay.
Yeah, basically, you know, staff went by probably, uh, what is it, four or five years ago, and we changed our code to go out to 100 feet at, um, maximum length because of basic analysis we did. But again, on a case-by-case basis, depends on where they are and if it's a newer dock and the seagrass and all. I mean, we base our recommendation on, uh, DEP Army Corps because they're the ones that do an analysis and we are not. 100 feet, 100 feet was the average we did when we rewrote the code about five years ago. Um, so basically, staff makes an analysis on Army Corps and, um, because everything shifts and changes over the years out there in intercoastal. And so we use that, their, um, expertise for that. So that's how we came up with 100 feet back about five years ago. Uh, because you remember before that, it actually was, I think it was 70, we took it to 100.
Yeah, I remember.
Because as the, as the, as the yachts get bigger and the boats get bigger over time.
Yeah.
Uh, people have to go further out and it's the water table changes and the seagrasses, uh, water getting lower and lower and the seagrasses. So it's forcing people to go out more. And again, staff just relies on, uh, DEP and Army Corps to give us their professional opinion about the docks.
Can you imagine a dock going out to 200 feet or 250 feet? I mean, is there some...
I think you'll get to a point where you're going to get into the channel.
So as long as they don't get in the channel, as long as they don't get in the channel, the city looks at a case-by-case basis and if it's...
Yes.
I mean, when we say they're forced to, they're enforced to get that size boat, you know, so...
Yeah, this is correct.
They get a, a cruise ship and then we say, well, you know...
I don't think Army Corps is going to pass something that's going to go out into the, uh, channel and block the channel zone. I think that's where it would stop there with them.
All right.
I'll, I'll also add that, um, we have had situations before. We typically look at a six-foot depth on average. But you remain, you may remember, we've had dock cases in the past where Angela alluded to it. There has been an existence of sea, uh, seagrass.
Right.
We typically ask for an analysis and the dock could be extended because the interest is in preserving those seagrasses. So in some cases, a dock will even be extended, not because of depth, but because of the seagrass, um, locations in and around that area.
Okay. Um, uh, Ms. White, if you don't mind, I believe we have a letter from the public.
Yes, a letter dated April 17th from Casey and Dana Cowell. Address 3240 North Flagler, West Palm Beach, Florida 33407. Our Planning Board Case Number 1851. Dear Commissioners of the City of West Palm Beach Planning Commission, There are approximately 20 single-family homes along North Flagler between 28th and 34th. Practically all homeowners have docks and only 50% more boats. The views along our shoreline are beautiful as we watch boat traffic and enjoy visions of incredible sea life such as manatees, dolphins, and others. This is a special place to be sure. A dock of 156 feet, 56 feet beyond the 100-foot limit is truly an outlier. If permitted, this dock and a large vessel that is proposed to be moored there will obstruct views of our waterway. The request is both unreasonable and unnecessary because the neighboring docks show that there is sufficient water depth at the allowable maximum feet of 100 feet. Excuse me, maximum length of 100 feet. We are concerned that the requested use will permit, permit a commercial or other oversized yacht, which will compromise neighbors' views and the residential nature of this community. Your existing ordinance is unreasonable. Slight variances make sense, but something of this magnitude does not resonate with the personality of this neighborhood. We also see no hardship or circumstances that are unique to this property that would justify the substantial variance from the code requirements. We ask that you deny the request and stick to the existing ordinances, Section 94-313. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And we are attachments.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. So what are your views? Who would like to speak first?
I'll go first. Um, you know, they've done the research. They've done an extensive amount of, uh, debt sounding and, and obviously the seagrass, the seagrass has to be protected and you can't alter it. I mean, dredging would have been the, the cheaper solution, but in this situation, it's just not going to work. You know, when you, when you dredge a, a channel, then you're forever dredging. It, it fills in no time at all. So I think that the request is, uh, reasonable considering that they got approvals from all the important departments.
Thank you. Who else would like to be heard? Uh, Todd, go ahead, but you had to unmute yourself. There you go.
I think we all share the concern about potential commercial use, you know, you don't, none of us wants to see that, but there's conditions of approval that prohibit that, so... I'm not sure why, as you kind of expressed earlier, we keep getting these top applications so often even after the code change. But, um, in this case, they seem to have met all the regulatory requirements and there's conditions of approval to prevent some of the things that we don't want to see in the future.
Thank you. Deborah, Scott, have you any comments?
I do not.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, uh, look, I'm, I'm not unsympathetic to some of the concern raised by the, the letter from the public. Um, uh, but I don't think that that, I mean, I think that in this particular case, you know, I think we have to be governed by the, you know, the evidence and testimony brought before us and the application of the standards to, uh, to the request. And so, you know, but I, I do, I do think there is some, I do think there are some policy decisions that, that need to be, you know, considered in the future moving forward because I, I can only imagine if this gets bigger and bigger, um, you know, it could pose, you know, problems for waterfront owners.
Thank you. Mark? I've been seeing you nod or shake your head during the commentary, so I, I think I know where you stand on this one as well. Yep, no, I'm good. The only comment I would make, um, I do have some misgivings about the, the length and, and it's being justified by the size of the boat. And it seems, I mean, that's kind of looking at it backwards because you could always get a boat that would justify then a longer and longer pier. Having said that, um, one thing I disagree with the comment made in the letter is that, um, that it's unnecessary. The only evidence before us is it is necessary to have this longer dock to accommodate this boat. Uh, her comment was, well, um, you don't need to have it that long. And I think the only evidence before us is contrary to that, that, that the length is necessary if they want to keep that boat there. So I, I will support the application. Any further discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Planning Board Case Number 1851 with conditions.
We have a motion, have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Somebody from the public would like to make a comment?
I had, um, I had made that offer before, um, and no one spoke up. Is there someone who's called in since?
Um, it is a person named Dana Cowell.
Okay, well, let's... Uh, Ms. Cowell, can you hear us?
I have her unmuted now.
Okay, you can unmute her?
She is.
Ms. Cowell, um, we cannot see you. Um, is she just calling in or is she using the Zoom?
Um, she is, uh, through Zoom as an attendee.
Um, Ms. Cowell, if you'd like, I think if you click the camera on the bottom left-hand corner, you can activate your camera, we could see you. Can you hear us?
Let's see if she put a message in chat.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let me see.
It's just identifying who she is.
Okay, all right. So I'm looking at the chat thing, I'm not seeing, oh, no, there you are, Ms. Cowell, hi. Can you hear us? We cannot hear you.
She is unmuted, I'm not sure why.
Okay, why don't you unmute her if you can?
No, she is unmuted already.
Okay. Ms. Cowell, we cannot hear you. She's, okay, we don't hear you. Um, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. There's a microphone in the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. Can you make sure there's not a circle through it?
We just press alternate A.
Oh, show off. You hear that alternate A?
I, I show it's currently unmuted.
Yeah, she's off mute, but she has had, having audio problems with her own.
Okay, I'm so sorry, we can't hear, can there be a telephone number she can call in?
Um, yes, there is.
I'm sorry, this is, this is Elena. She's the one who actually wrote the letter that you guys, yeah.
Ms. Cowell, I know if you heard us, we read your letter in its entirety into the record. We all heard it, we all received it, and it was read into the record. So, so your voice was heard. Um, at this point though, um, where we're just ready to take a vote. And so at this point, um, we had a motion as second, as I recall, is that correct? Can someone refresh my memory?
Yes.
Okay, in which case I'll call the question unless there's any further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. So again, Ms. White, I don't think we need a roll call vote, so long as it's unanimous. The moment it's not, we'll have the roll call. Fair enough? All right, that then brings us to the next application. I think our last one. It's Planning Board Case Numbers 8780, 1849, and 1849A. And, uh, who would like to make the presentation on behalf of the applicant?
It will need to be sworn in.
Thank you. Were you, were you not here during the swearing-in, Mr. Millich?
Uh, I was.
Okay, and, and who's the other one then? Who's making a presentation? Is it just you, sir?
Um, yeah, I, I should be the only one speaking.
Okay, okay, so...
Chairman, this is John Roach. I was not sworn in. I was running around trying to connect people, so...
Okay, will you be speaking as too? If you raise your right hand then, John? You swear from the testament you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful.
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Millich, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name's David Millich from Cotler and Hearing on behalf of the applicant, uh, which is Tamcat 45th Street LLC. Um, uh, this is for Planning Board Case Numbers 8780, 1849, 1849A. And, um, as I mentioned, the applicant is Tamcat 45th Street LLC. Our traffic engineer for this, uh, request was Kingly Horn. Uh, Cotler and Hearing is here today as the land planner and the surveyor was while surveying. Um, the property at question is the Metro Center Corporate Park, which is located at the, essentially the intersection of 45th Street and I-95. It's approximately 45 acres. It has a future land use of commercial and a zoning of a CPD. And this screen in front of you is the aerial of the property, as you can see. Uh, Interstate 95 is located to the east and, uh, it's south of 45th Street. In 1987, this project, uh, was approved by the city, uh, for this, uh, corporate park. And, uh, it currently is fully built out. It contains restaurants, hotels, uh, and other office uses. A portion of Metro Center is Lot 10 and a, a lake portion, which is just under 10 acres. It has the same, uh, future land use and zoning. And the applicant, uh, as one of the requests is proposing to, uh, change the land use and the zoning. Um, Lot 10 is located at the southeast of the corporate park. And most recently, it houses a culinary school, but for years it has remained vacant. Um, and the purpose, uh, before you today is to remove Lot 10 and a portion of the lakes so it would facilitate redevelopment. Uh, before you right now is an aerial of Lot 10 and the lake portion, uh, that's subject to this request. And, uh, the, the major amendment to the CPD, um, is to remove this, uh, Lot 10 and the adjacent lake from the Metro Center CPD. Before you right now would be the, uh, resulting boundary line of Metro Center. As you can see, the southeast of the property, uh, is no longer, would be considered, uh, part of the CPD. In addition to this major amendment to the CPD would be a future land use map amendment. The applicant is proposing to change the current, uh, commercial land use to, uh, multifamily. In addition, a rezoning request to change from the CPD designation to the multifamily high-density MS-32 zoning district. Um, you know, the ultimate project, uh, residential project remained in a conceptual stage. Um, and it will be subject to additional applications and public hearings. If the zoning and land use were approved tonight, uh, the maximum development potential for Lot 10 would be, uh, 322 dwelling units. Um, the development would remain on Lot 10 as the lake portion would, is necessary for drainage, not only for Lot 10, but also for the remainder of, uh, Metro Center. Uh, there is a large trend of including multifamily projects close to employment centers. Um, it, it reduces traffic. It, um, is easier for employees and employers. Um, and there's similar projects that are currently being built in the city, uh, one of which is Center Park, which is around the area of Australian and Belvedere. which is around the area of Australian and Belvedere. Uh, so these are the three requests uh, that applicant is seeking, and we appreciate your time and consideration.
I'm hearing a dog. I just want to make sure he, he's, he's sworn in before it makes any further comments. That's all.
Exactly.
Um, all right, um, if you could uh, un-designate the screen share. And um, first, have any questions of the applicant? Let me start with Mark. Any questions? Uh, Todd? Scott? Deborah?
No.
Chris or Peter?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
There was something that was implicit, but it wasn't to- maybe I just didn't catch it or it wasn't clear to me. So the idea of carving out this, this uh, property, does that enable you to develop the three hundred and twenty-two units? And if you didn't carve it out, would it be fewer than three hundred and twenty-two units? Is that what's going on?
No, uh, well, uh, based off the city's code, you, you're not allowed to build any residential units within a CPD. So the reason for the carve-out is essentially to get this zoning, rezone and uh, future land use map amendment to allow for residential units.
So it's zero units to three twenty-two, is that what you mean?
Correct. And based off of uh, analysis that we provided in the application, traffic would actually be reduced um, with the three hundred and twenty-two units. And the level of service on the public facilities, um, the, the impact of any, it can be accommodated based off the current um, facilities.
Okay, uh, Peter, had you a question?
Uh, David, you said your surveyor was with you?
Uh, the survey is not on the call tonight, uh, but it is Wallace Surveying.
Uh, it's a small point, but I think before you submit this document, uh, you should correct it. If you want to go to exhibit number five, and you may have to zoom it in a little bit. Or attachment number five on page twenty-two.
I, I don't know if he has the staff report up, but he just had his PowerPoint, so.
Oh.
I can pull it up if that would help you. Um, what page was it on?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, hold on one second.
It's a survey of the entire property. What, what is the question, Peter?
Yeah.
Well, the question is, it says uh, Lot Seven is three point seven five acres and Lot Eight is forty acres. Lot Eight is half the size of Lot Seven. So something, something's off in this survey.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Lot Eight should be four acres, uh, and not forty.
It's no, there is no way that that's four acres. It's definitely less than four acres.
Peter, excuse me, is this page twenty-two you said?
Well, exhibit.
Hold on, I think I can pull it up.
Attachment number five.
I think, tell me if this is it.
Yeah, that's it. If you can zoom in on seven and eight or like in the center of the page.
Okay, let me, let me fix this.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Roach. So this is the master plan for, for Metro Center. So it may be a typo with regards to the acreage. This was prepared by Cotler and Herring. Uh, we can make those adjustments with, and corrections before we go to city commission.
Yeah, ma- make sure it's corrected because uh, like I said, something's off between Lot Seven and Eight.
This isn't the survey. This is just the master plan that shows the maximum square footage that is allocated to each lot.
Okay, but that's, that's what's wrong.
Understood.
Okay.
We'll make the change.
Okay.
All right, let me get out of that. Um, all right, any other questions, Peter?
That's it, thank you.
All right, um, can we then hear from staff? John?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, let me just share my screen.
John, you gotta bring your microphone closer to your mouth, buddy.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Not as well as we'd like to.
Okay, uh, hold on one second.
How about that? Can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay. Um, so I believe the applicant provided all the details with regards to the case. Just want to clarify, there are three applications. The first one is the major amendment to remove Lot Ten and the portion of the lake from the Metro Center CPD. The other two cases are with regards to Lot Ten and the lake portion specifically. One, changing the future land use designation uh, to multifamily and changing the zoning designation to MF thirty-two as the uh, the applicant showed. Um, just for the record, staff is in support of the application as you saw within the uh within the staff report. Uh, we are recommending approval. We are have, or excuse me, do have a couple of conditions with regards to eighteen forty-nine and eighteen forty-nine A. Um, those we relate to the traffic generation and so forth. Um, those conditions are outlined on page two of the staff report. Um, it's staff's professional opinion that the request complies with the standards uh, required in the comp plan as well as in the zoning and land development regulations. Therefore, we're recommending approval. And as stated by the applicant, uh, the traffic, the potential traffic that could be generated by changing the future land use designation would actually be reduced. Um, so while some of the other ones would be increased, uh, the applicant did correctly indicate that there is sufficient capacity to uh, to handle those. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report, and can answer any questions that you have.
John, can you mention also that if the land use and zoning is approved, the actual plan for the apartments would come back to the planning board and commission once developed?
If they choose to move forward with a project that is more than ninety-nine units, yes, they would come back before the planning board and the city commission. They have expressed their intent that they would come back with a residential plan development um, in order to maximize the development potential on the site as well as potentially request some waivers. However, those plans have not formally been submitted yet, but yes, the zoning code requires that any projects over ninety-nine dwelling units do require public hearing before the planning board and city commission.
Steve, you gotta unmute yourself, Steve. You're, you're you're talking, but you're muted.
Thank you for that. I, I thought I sounded better that way, but perhaps not.
They have dulled some tones.
Um, can you, uh, John, do you mind turning off the share? There we go, so we can see everyone. All right, any questions of staff? I'll just start with you, Deborah. I've worked my way around the room.
I don't have any questions.
Chris, have you? Now you're muted. There you go.
No questions.
Thank you, Peter?
None.
Scott? No. Uh, Todd?
No questions.
Mark? All right, um, would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Application. Um, I did have one quick question of, of uh, John. Um, the, the lake that's there, the um was that originally designed to help with drainage? I'm sure that's all going to be handled, just from my own understanding. Um, was that lake originally, was it just for beauty or was it there to, to help with drainage? Or what was its original purpose?
No, that lake is actually required as part of the drainage retention requirements for all of Metro Center.
So if they were to, if they were to move forward with this project, would that lake stay?
Yes, I, I believe the applicant indicated in their presentation that any future development would in, occur entirely on the upland portion of Lot Ten because the lake is required for drainage
Okay.
and would not be able to be filled.
And, and my other question for you, John, is this. Separate from whether we support this application or not, isn't this the type of development the city wants? I mean, just in concept to have, as he said, to have more residential units closer to places of work. I mean, just the larger picture for the city.
Yeah, in terms of the big picture, say, as we indicated in our staff report, it's kind of a trend that's happening. You saw this with Center Park.
Right.
As David indicated, uh, which I was involved with as there, as on that project as well. Uh, completely entire, uh, completely office, uh, but then they recognized the need to introduce residential into the complex. You know, this one presents a little bit more of a challenge in the sense that the site is completely, um I don't want to say isolated, but is at the far east end of the Metro Center Boulevard on a cul-de-sac, you know, a little bit detached from its surroundings, but those are, those are some challenges that we can work through as we develop the site plan with the applicant. Um, and, and trying to accommodate the, the amenities and the needs that a residential project would have that a commercial project does, doesn't necessarily need. Um, so this one's a little bit different in the sense that it's kind of ex- you know, isolated. Um, but introducing residential into these commercial parks is, is something that's, that's occurring more frequently.
And is, is a trend the city tends to support? The planning department supports?
Yeah, and anytime we can, you know, reduce the impact of, of various developments, try and provide for a mixture of uses. As the applicant said, you know, um, you're introducing the ability for people to live near where they potentially work, therefore there's fewer cars on the road and so forth. Um, that's certainly something that we look for.
Okay, fine. Any other comments uh, from the board? If not, we'll pull it back for discussion. Does anyone have an objection to uh, to these applications? I think we need to take them separately, so if someone would help us work our way through them.
I move approval of Mr. Chairman of uh, Palm Beach, uh, case number eight seven eight zero.
Is that one that has any conditions? I'm trying to record. Okay.
No.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next motion, please.
Move approval of case number eighteen forty-nine with conditions.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Last motion.
Uh, move approval of case number eighteen forty-nine A with conditions.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, next on our agenda would be code revision cases, of which we have, is there another case?
You want Angela back?
I know, we're gonna bring her back. She's gonna come under un- unfinished business. But just working through our agenda, code revision case, we have none. That moves us to other business, none, unfinished business. Ms. Van, are you still with us?
Don't stay here.
Um, we were looking forward to the report of the staff.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, we had technical difficulties today.
I know, so we're giving you a second chance.
I know, I still can't get on my computer to do anything, so I will make sure I make up for it next month.
Okay.
There's only one case that was heard between uh, your meeting in uh, March and um, April, so I'll make it up for you guys in April. I mean, in May, I'm sorry.
Steve, may I ask Angela or then maybe Rick a question?
Of course.
As, as, you know, using, using their report time a little bit. So I'm, I'm very curious, uh, you know, things have been going we've been on such a roll in terms of bringing great projects to West Palm Beach over the last couple of years since I've been on this, this board. And, and I'm curious, you know, has the, is, how, how is the coronavirus affecting the development pipeline?
Very good question, and I was gonna pipe in.
City West Palm Beach. I know it's early days.
Yeah, uh, Chris, I was gonna kind of touch upon that when Angela was done, but I, I will say that City Hall is still open. Um, as of last, uh, not yesterday, but the week before, we discouraged um, folks from um, coming into the City Hall unless they had an appointment. Um, so what we've done is we've established a Dropbox. We're encouraging everybody to use electronic permitting and submittal, and then we're getting on average between fifteen and twenty-two permits submitted a day being what we call walk-in. So we have a Dropbox at the entrance. They don't even have to go through security. Everything else is, is coming in electronically, so um, we've gone from four hundred and roughly eighty plans that were in review in early March. We've got, we whittled that number down to about two hundred and twenty. Um, so we're getting a little catch-up. Most of our staff is working remotely. Um, but we do have people coming in to answer any questions, phone calls if they're not being forwarded. Inspections, I've been tracking inspections, permits, walk-ins since March second. Um, we were doing on a weekly basis, beginning on March second, nine hundred fifty-one inspections a week. We're down to five hundred forty-four, actually the same number the last two weeks. So that's been cut almost in half, so ironically, we are in the process now. I just submitted our budget for next year. So we're gonna be a little cautious because nobody really knows what impacts COVID nineteen is gonna, gonna have in the future. I'll certainly defer to Mark who might have his crystal ball working, but um, we're gonna be a little bit conservative, but at least what I'm hearing is it's gonna be maybe a little slow for the next six to twelve months, but whatever the downside might be, the expectation is the rebound will occur for whatever loss we experience, let's say in the next year, the following year. Um, so you're, you're right. We, we set a record last year at twelve point two million dollars in building permits. We were on pace through the first six months of this fiscal year to hit thirteen million, so we would have set a record. But I suspect that that's gonna slow down a little bit, so probably won't do what we did in fiscal year nineteen. Um, but we'll certainly still have a good year. One saving grace that we have is that because of all the new development we've had, um, a lot of new projects are gonna hit the tax roll this year. Um, particularly the, the Bristol condominium, which could have upwards of a six hundred, six hundred fifty million dollar addition to the tax roll. Um, so that's a huge number, so the timing for us is fortuitous, so um, we're gonna keep plugging away. We're still, we're still accepting permits, we're doing inspections. We're trying to help people best we can get through this, and then hopefully the economy rebounds pretty quickly, but we're just gonna have to wait and see.
Uh, thank you for your comments.
Is there any other matters the board wishes to take up? If not, I thank you for your patience and participation in this unique meeting, and we stand adjourned.